So, good evening. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, June 27th, 2023. The time is 7:44 PM. Thank you for your patience. We welcome you, all of our guests, board members, administrators, to our Montgomery Township Board Education Open Public Meeting. Board Secretary Oatman, public vote, please.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Ellie.
Here.
Ms. Fielek. Ms. Franco Herman.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Spina.
Present.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Ms. Fielek and Jernigan.
Here.
And Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Present. Everyone, please rise to the platform.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with the soul of liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please be seated and thank you. Due to the absence of our student representative, Mr. Wallace, congratulations to him again for his recent graduation. The next item on our agenda, thank you, is our superintendent's reports and oral presentation. Superintendent McLaughlin?
Thank you. Good evening. The district had a smooth end to the 22-23 school year. You'd always march the start of new beginnings and the end of eras. On June 20th, we had our eighth grade promotion ceremony, where the students were proudly promoted and welcomed into the high school community. And they received their first spirit wear, the MHS class of 2027 t-shirts. The very next evening, our Montgomery High School seniors sat in those same chairs as they were celebrated and said goodbye to their wonderful experiences at Montgomery Township School District. The SOAR program has begun this week and the extended school year begins next week. I now would like to introduce Mrs. Heather Pino Beating to come up, because we have some candidates for our vice principals for tonight. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you again, members of the board, Superintendent McLaughlin, Board President Spencer Wallace. What an exciting week it's been of continuously rainy weather. But brighter days are coming. Brighter days are coming. I am here tonight to introduce two vice principal candidates for our two openings at Montgomery High School. While the microphone falls down on me. I'm just gonna hold it. So, as you know, we had two openings for very exciting reasons. One of our vice principals, this is Raquel Rivera, will now be the principal of the upper middle school. We are extremely excited and proud of her. And then our other vice principal, Mr. Scott Machuda, is leading us to broaden his experiences and he will be the vice principal of the lower middle school. So, I just want to start by saying that these two absolutely spectacular individuals, we are not even going to try to fill their shoes. What we are going to do is invite our new candidates to bring their own shoes and create their own spots and their own vision in Montgomery High School. We know that as they join us, they will do just as Raquel and Scott did. They will drive us to become better professionals, better human beings, and continue to broaden the experiences for our students. And we are so truly excited about them both. So, the first person I'm going to introduce you tonight is Mr. Vincent Kukure. So, Vincent, I'll just go with the whole first name instead of doing a person last. Earned a bachelor's degree in English from Westchester University in 2005. And then he actually worked in a corporate capacity for eight years. So, he came to education a slightly different route, but recognized he wanted to have a huge impact in where he was currently working. It just wasn't fulfilling that purpose for him. So, then he earned his graduate level teacher certification from Rider University in 2014 and later a master of arts in teaching from Rider in 2016. Close to my heart, he spent the last nine years teaching English. So, shout out to the English teachers out there at Hillsborough High School, where he's had a huge impact on his students, filling a variety of roles from junior varsity baseball coach, club advisor, senior class advisor, which I know is a very daunting task. And what I would like you to know is, I had a very unique experience in checking references for both candidates. And that's not something that I would typically talk about, but I want to talk about it tonight for both of them. So, in speaking to several of their past principals, the things that I heard were the things that every person would want to hear said about them. So, they are, I'll start with Vincent. Vincent is passionate. He deeply cares about children. He is a magnet, a magnet especially for those kids that often feel as though they are not seen or heard. And they often find someone that sees them, hears them, and finds an opportunity to strengthen their voice in Mr. Kukure. So, it is a common thing that in the halls of Hillsborough High School, you will hear people yelling out "Yo, Kuk!" We're gonna hope for Mr. Kukure, but since they yell "Yo, Pino" to me, I'm gonna go with we're probably gonna hear that for him as well. He believes in building strong relationships with students, parents, staff, and is a believer in thorough and concise communication and collaboration, two things that are extremely important to all of us here in Montgomery. Today with him, he has his wife Linda, his two daughters, and his son. I finally hired on the correct side of the sports world and he is a giant season supporter. That's unfortunate. It's okay. We're gonna overlook the fact that our current and fabulous vice principal, Mr. McAvaney, is not a giant supporter. He has a variety of hobbies that include coaching his children, cooking, and one that is important to me, reading. So, now with a couple of words, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it. First, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing this opportunity. I do have a few thank yous I'd like to briefly address if possible first. My parents have always been my biggest supporters, so I always appreciate any feedback and input and just how they've always supported me and loved me from day one. So, they're kind of my role models and they're same role models that I try to be for my own children. So, I'd like to thank my parents, my in-laws, who are heavily involved in education. They've inspired me to also get involved in education. So, I'd like to thank them as well. My wife, my beautiful wife Linda, also in education. She's really just my rock at home. When I'm taking classes, when I'm working on SGOs, working late grading essays, she just manages the house spectacularly. We've got three children over there, as you can see. They're a little bit wild and she just is an amazing mother, an amazing spouse, an amazing friend. So, thank you and fun. To my three little kiddos over there, Brinchen and Blake. Two of them are reading. I think they're trying to fool you all. And my littlest is very excited to wear her new dress with hearts on it. So, that was her big thing today. So, it's been a bit of a challenge to try and, you know, work in this capacity and also be a parent as well. But yet, they've always been just amazing and fun and it's just a new adventure every single day. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention all my colleagues and role models and administrators and students at Hillsborough High School. It's been an amazing nine years, so I'd like to thank them as well. Mary, Heather, thank you so much for this opportunity. I can't wait to get started. I'm really looking forward to really working with students at Montgomery High School as well. Can't wait to really begin to build those relationships there too. To the Board of Education, thank you very much for, again, allowing me this opportunity. Can't wait to get started. My excitement is through the roof. When Heather called, I was ear to ear smiling, could not wait to say yes to this opportunity. Main reason being is the climate and culture that was built at Montgomery High School. It's a family atmosphere. You can feel it as soon as you walk through the doors. And that's somewhere that I really want to be a part of. JP said it best, which was it went from "I want a job eventually" to "I want this job. This is where I want to be." It's just a really great place. Scott and Raquel, you guys are certainly, as Heather said, leaving some big shoes to fill. So, hopefully I'll double socket and be able to kind of fit those one day. After one of my interviews, I came home and told my wife, it was an interview, but it felt like a conversation. It felt natural, like people just discussing education and pedagogy and education philosophy. And it was just a natural fit from the beginning. As Heather said, I do value communication and collaboration. I think I'm a genuine, authentic, student-centered person. I can't wait to kind of convey those values in Montgomery High School. So, hopefully it won't take too much more of your time, but let's get to work. Can't wait. Thank you.
No high fives, but I'll remind you.
She will make her.
And that's fair. On the night that I became principal, I'll remind you that my youngest almost took out several of the bookcases. We are on the upswing tonight, guys. So, for our second candidate this evening, we have Mr. John Vitale. So, John holds a master's degree in education from Fairleigh Dickinson, where he also completed his undergraduate degree. While attending college, he had a unique experience and he studied abroad during winter break and he taught in England and then led a study abroad experience in Japan. After graduating, he realized he needed to go a little bit further and pursued his special education degree from Rutgers University. He needed, he recognized that he was reaching some kids, but wanted to make sure that he had the toolbox to reach all kids. He later obtained his certification in school administration from the NJXL program. And he also began his teaching career at Hillsborough High School as a special education and social studies teacher. I promise you, Mary, we are not changing our school culture. Reading goes through and through. Hillsborough uniquely is a much bigger high school than ours. So, John and Vincent all know of each other. They do not really know each other at all. So, they are coming to our much smaller family. During John's tenure, he's coached football. He's advised the peer mentoring program, facilitated the Raider strength and conditioning program, and has participated in a wide variety of school and district-based committees and programs that are all aimed at bettering student experience. When I spoke with three of John's principals about him, all three said the same thing, which I found to be striking. He is one of the best and most firmest human beings we will ever meet. So, that came through in John's interview. And when you see that in someone, you kind of wonder for a second, is this real or am I seeing what they want to show me? And when you hear it from principal after principal after principal, how wonderful and genuine they are, you know that it's something that is real. John has dedicated his career to fostering an inclusive and supportive learning environment where students are encouraged to explore their interests, challenge themselves, and develop critical thinking skills, even the thinking skills of those behind me. He also strongly emphasizes the importance of community and believes that collaboration enhances the students' educational experiences and strengthens the educational community that we are a part of. For John, his hobbies include writing music, playing guitar, cross-training, and also cooking. So, my friends on the Board of Ed, I think that we should ask them to cook for us at some point. He's here tonight with his wife Brittany, his children, and at home, he's got two wonderful dogs. Let her think about one tonight. So, without further ado, I give you John.
Hi, everyone. First, I really want to thank my wife, my kids, for just always being there for me. Everything I do, I really do for them. My parents are full artists of concern. You might not hear these words. I'll let them know. They've always been a huge supporter of everything that I do. And also, most importantly, my in-laws, who are my mother-in-law was a, what, 43 years?
Forty-five.
Forty-five years in kindergarten, first grade, in East Brunswick, and never left a classroom that she taught in. Quick to drag her out. And my father-in-law, over 30 years in Hystown as a vice principal. So, they are a major point of support for me and I go to them a lot. I want to thank the board for bringing us here and having me and also Mary, Heather, and JP, Scott, and Raquel. The second I walked into the first round interview, I could feel the vibe that I always knew was in Montgomery. I grew up in Hillsborough, so I always knew what Montgomery, right, were named, right? So, I've always known a lot about Montgomery. And then in college, I got to do two experiences where I observed teachers. I was with actually Paul Stemler. He set me up with as many teachers as possible to see what Montgomery High School was like. I disliked my college to get back in for a second winter session. And in my third winter session, I went over to England because they said you can't go to Montgomery again even though I'm on a tour. So, I just, I've always known how amazing Montgomery is and what a great township it is and what a close knit community is. And when I walked into that first interview and then even into the second interview, I wanted nothing more than to just be part of this community and show you what I can do. And also, you know, I truly believe that you do not get where you are without the people that you come in contact with. And everybody at Hillsborough, the kind words that Mike Ciborski, Alan Simpson, Michelle Fisher, and pretty much everybody in Hillsborough has helped shape and brought me to where I am today. I do not believe that I did it alone and I do not believe that I can do it alone here at Montgomery. So, I'm really excited to get to work and to get to know all of you and just be part of this community. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I have much work. So, as we know, we do not throw around the word family lightly here in our district and especially not in our high school. Our family is hurting as we watch two of our own move on and we are so proud of them. But we are also so incredibly excited to have these two candidates join our family and our team and continue our work to create the absolute best of experiences for all of our students, make sure our students are seen, heard, valued, and feel as though they belong. So, with that, thank you all. Have a wonderful evening. Hope you have a good rest.
Thank you so much, Superintendent McLaughlin and Vice Principal Pino Beating. Now, we've reached the point of our agenda, the action, action, agenda items. Public comments. The Board of Education will read the instructions. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed at one opportunity to address the board regarding the action, agenda items only, for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. For unique information, however, please state your name and address and write both in the notebook provided at the podium. Be mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members. And to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as Q and A sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, typically starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. Our action, agenda items only, public comment is open. Hearing no action, agenda items.
Sorry. Hi.
Which actual agenda item will you represent?
Oh, you know what? I just want to talk publicly about my own agenda item. Is that for?
That would be the second public.
All right. Sorry, I haven't been here in a while.
No problem. Thank you. Hearing no other, action, agenda, public comments. This part of our agenda is now closed. Next, we will have our committee and representative reports, starting with our InteDang president, Mr. Jay Darling. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, community members, administrators, and staff members. You're watching this tomorrow or live here at this connect. I want to congratulate Vince and John. Look forward to working with them. I'm glad that they had such a wonderful experience through the interview process because peering in from the outside and being a part of them and some of the past ones that we've had was pretty daunting. You're in front there all alone and you have a big panel around you. There aren't questions that you, so we have it very good, but it's intense. And I'm glad, we always seem to get wonderful candidates out of it, as evidenced today and in prior meetings too. So, look forward to working with them. I know they're really awesome. They just have to figure out where everything is at the high school. That'll take probably the longest. Not a whole lot to report, you know, with the end of the year and just our last board meeting was only two weeks ago. But we did have our wellness fair at the high school just last week, which was really successful, helping staff members in both body and mind and also with a whole handful of vendors that were there to help them out from everything from eyeglasses to high blood pressure, you name it. So, it's something that the staff enjoys, even playing games and yoga and volleyball and everything else that you can imagine. And we look forward to playing around with the date and see if we can get it done sooner. You know, at the end of the year, it's not always when you need your most wellness. It's kind of maybe March, you know, when it's cold and a long month. So, we'll figure out if we can find another day somewhere to, or do work in wellness. And we've been doing that with other meetings as well throughout the year. So, that'll be something we'll talk about and look into as well. You might remember the last board meeting talked about the Monte Takes Pride in Summer Reading Grant. So, we did identify a bunch of students, teachers identified them. So, the whole idea is to get books in their hands, to celebrate reading, help those who don't have new books or inventory in their own houses and have our little MTEALs deliver those books over the summer. That's coming up good as well, soon as well. Our district leadership team met in mid-June and we are supporting our next goal, which is supporting student achievement. It might seem odd that that's our goal because that's what we're always here to do. That's what we're here for in education. But it is something we want to review, our test scores, as we've started doing and doing really all year, but also take a close look at those, see how they impact each and every individual school. Because as you might imagine, handling it with schools that don't test formally through the state at, let's say, Orchard Hill versus all the way at the high school. So, we have to look at how we can look at that data, see what we need, see what we need to do to support all students here in Montgomery. So, that's a real exciting next goal for us, for our district leadership team. And we're looking forward to getting together over the summer as well, to get a date on the calendar. That way, we can continue that work over the summer as well as during the school year. So, the teams consist of our principals in each building, our MTEA VPs as well, central office staff. And then we invite people in as needed, depending on what needs are and what information we might need and what decisions need to be made. So, that's a real exciting one, a real important one. And we're all looking to really dive in deep, look at the data, and do its best possible. That's it for me. Thank you. And once again, a board meeting never disappoints with bad weather. So, sooner or later, we'll get a sunny day. Thanks. Good night.
Thank you. So, at this time, we'll hear our board member delegates and/or representative reports. I will start this evening. Thank you. So, this Board of Education experience continues to come as a surprise to me. It was never my plan to run for any public office, local or otherwise. And as I've shared previously, I stumbled upon a special Montgomery Board meeting in June of 2020. And it was conducted virtually. And I heard many students exercise their powerful voices. And I was inspired. I asked myself, if those young brave persons can step up, then why not me? And while I thought I was insane to volunteer so much time, juggling board work with my own career, family time, and fun, knowing contributions in a positive way and in form of championing excellence where students and staff benefit, is gratifying. As a collaborative leader, it's my hope we all share in the goal of becoming more responsible, more efficient, appropriately communicative, and caring in our role as Board of Education members. We're excited to see how our structure this year will help us to govern in a more supportive, nonjudgmental way. Our board retreat this year, held last Tuesday, June 20th, consisted of topics to build each of our capacity. Our New Jersey School Boards Association Field Representative, Gwen Thornton, was particularly helpful sharing her expertise with Robert's rules, communication, the superintendent's evaluation, and strategic planning, while her colleague, Vince DeLucia, presented on the topic of diversity and equity but from a personal story perspective. Like the Three Musketeers, our board experience is modeled as one for all and all for one. The authority bestowed upon us lies with the nine of us, not any individual or group of individuals. I'm blessed to call each of the board members my colleagues. I admire all of your relentless advocacy for what's best for students and appropriate for our staffing. Each of you inspired me to actually stick with this. And I thank you for that. Thank you to every single Montgomery community member who has both supported us and challenged us. We appreciate you all so much because it is you to whom we represent. I am who I am as a board member because of all of the board members' commitment and love and value to this work. Are there any other board member delegate reports at this time? Hearing none, we will move to our board.
I just wanted to quickly echo that the retreat was one of the first times that I felt like, as a board, we were able to talk candidly with one another. And I'm sure that it's been very clear that we come from very different worlds, very different perspectives, very different viewpoints. But we have been doing a better job as we move forward to really hear one another, listen to one another, and try to find a happy medium for the sake of our kids. So, I really appreciated that time that we had as a board. And I know that all nine of us are committed to moving forward and to communicating as best we can. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you, board members. Any other board members who would like to comment about the retreat? So, we move to our board committee reports. And all committee reports were presented at our Tuesday, June 13th, Open Public Meeting. Save the Operations, Facilities, and Finance Committee report that second VP Todd will deliver tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. Operations Facility and Finance Committee met on Friday, June 23rd from 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM. In attendance were myself, Cookie Franco Herman, Mayor McLaughlin, Gary Otman, Dave Lumbo, Jim Dolan, Michael Neal, and Tom Wayne. Very robust meeting. We started off talking about security upgrades that will be taking place at the various schools throughout the summer. Some of them will be very noticeable, while others will be not as noticeable. I will not get to details of those, but just rest assured that school safety is still paramount to the folks at this table. Second item we talked about is school services. As you recall from several meetings ago, we had a significant balance owed to the district regarding unpaid lunch accounts. Thanks to the hard work of the building principals and vice principals, we collected over the past two months about $15,000. So, that number has decreased. We will continue to work on decreasing that number. Software upgrades will be taking place soon to help us manage that process a little bit better. We then talked about the ongoing health insurance implementation that is taking place. Mr. Otman noted that it is proceeding as planned. From last month, you all will remember that the Township approached us about converting two of the middle school tennis courts to pickleball courts. The initial price was, estimate that we had, $25,000. It went out to bid and it came back at $41,000. The committee was not happy with that number and we asked that Mr. Otman go back to the Township Committee to get additional quotes. Last item we talked, or one of the last items we talked about was facility updates that will be taking place again over the summer. If you note from the action items, 3.5 is for the repair of the playground at EES. 3.17 is approved to replace the carpeting in certain areas of the high school, including the main office and guidance office. The next month, there will be a resolution to replace the carpet in the band room at LMS. I should also note that Board Secretary is recommending that the board reject item 3.9 for the sidewalk and side improvements. The estimates came in almost double as to what the architect anticipated. So, we are going back to drawing on that one and looking at lowering the cost. Ms. Grunio reviewed projects happening during the summer, the work at OHES. The work at OHES is primarily for the ECC. EES is replacing one floor with hard tile flooring, and the ESY program will be running there. Any other work there will be limited because of that program. LMS will be running the sewer program, but the bandroom carpet will be replaced. UMS will be replacing floor tiles, which contains the messes in a couple of areas. Gym floors will be refurbished at EES, LMS and UMS. And the pavement projects for the high school and OHES have been completed. We also have gym items, 3.1 through 3.22 for approval. Also, I wanted at this time to thank our Board Secretary and Vice Administrator, Mr. Ottman, for his tutelage, advice, guidance throughout this whole process. Gary, we're going to miss you. On behalf of OFF, we'd like to thank you for your service.
Appreciate that. You have concluded my report. Any questions from board members?
I was just going to add, because I brought this up at OFF, that at the State Assembly, this bill was passed just recently. It's for the Universal Free School Lunch. It's already sitting in the Senate, and I think the likelihood of it passing is going to happen. So that begins in 2024. It's a five-year phasing, where after five years, the expectation is all schools, public schools, will have universal free lunch and breakfast. So just for everybody to have a flag that that's going to be happening. That's it.
Thank you, Board Secretary. Any other questions or comments? We now move to the approval of the minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the following meetings. May 23rd, the executive and business meeting. June 13th, executive session one, two, and the workshop and business meeting. So at this time, I move that the Board of Education approves those aforementioned meeting minutes.
So move.
Second. We'll call these four secretary.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
Ms. Vilek?
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yeah.
Ms. Sina?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Jordan again?
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Thank you. At this time, the Board of Education acknowledges the correspondence each received as published on page three of tonight's agenda. And now we've reached the part of our agenda for the second public comment, the new business. The instructions provided during the action agenda item remain applicable. So Board Secretary, I mean, our new business to the board, public comment is now.
How I can get up? Yes. Sorry. Let me apologize. Sure. So I'm Shannon Hovak-Mofoi, I'm a resident of Skellen, in the Penn State department. Thank you. My family's lived in Montgomery since 1976. I very happily moved back here about seven years ago to help my father age in place. And I was super excited to put my kid in the school district because my son in kindergarten three hundred had been recently diagnosed with ADHD. And the district in Connecticut had already identified the significant amount of help that he was going to be in terms of education. And they admitted that they couldn't pay for it because they didn't have the funding from the state, they didn't have the funding from the school. At that point, they had decided we were going to move to Montgomery. So when they pulled his IEP together, they put the whole thing in there. They gave me everything that I needed for my kid, and they said, let New Jersey figure it out. And I walked into the Montgomery Township School District Building, enrolled him in first grade, and not only did you guys give him everything he needed, but you gave him more. It was so incredibly gratifying. He was in a school district in Connecticut where they had six special needs kids, and they had a half-day para to split between all of us. So you can imagine how excited we were to have the opportunity to come to Montgomery. Since we've been here, both my kids have been diagnosed as neurodivergent with a couple of different challenges. And I think one of my frustrations, as we talk about inclusion and diversity in this district, is making sure those kids are included. I think the high school does a great job of it. I think we've got a lot of work to do with some of the grade schools and the middle schools. Just to give you an example, my son, who if anybody's been at UMS has probably seen him wear a suit to school because he prefers it, gets constantly made fun of for what he wears. He's been verbally attacked in the bathroom, called autistic, dumb, stupid and retarded. Despite his processing challenges, he opted to participate in two sports. Around the field, he was bullied by his teammates, some at the time, not all at the time. And it eventually resulted in three kids holding him down on the playground and beating him. To add insult to injury, he was harassed by his bus driver. She called him retarded and told him he needed therapy. And this is all in the context of a massive stimulant drug shortage where I can't even get him the meds he needs. Your administration was fantastic with helping our family through it. But what I'm seeing as the missing piece is the kids in this district being educated about these neurodivergent kids and understanding empathy and kindness and tolerance. They're not seen as different. They're seen as freaks in some cases, and it's really not fair. So as we talk about inclusion in the context of different sexualities, different genders, different races, I feel like this is a huge missing piece in our district. I'm asking you guys to consider opportunities to educate our kids differently about it. In this context, I have 20 seconds left regarding book banning. My son, who like I've already explained is neurodivergent, may not be ready for some of the mature topics as he moves into high school with some of these books. All I'm asking for is a choice to make a decision with his teachers and his decisions with the district to find the right curriculum for him in the context of what he's ready to understand and process. Annette, thank you. I don't know if everybody can hear me. It's not hard to hear better. So I'm really sorry to hear that some kids are having some difficulties.
We can't hear you.
Hello?
Yes.
Can we just start to plug again? I'm sorry. So I'm sorry to hear that certain kids are having experiences like that. I know that my son came in without diagnosis and we had to fight for that. But on the school bus end, we did have lots of issues called constantly because my son was being bullied on the school bus. So that is something we all want to look into because it sounds like, especially with my son's school bus, they sit for like 20 to 30 minutes in front of OHES, and that's not good for little people. So they're having trouble. There's no one really walking back and forth and kind of checking on them. Especially if certain kids are having more difficulty than others, it happens. And my son's always getting called in because if someone hits him, he has to defend himself and kind of gets in trouble. So that is an issue. And kindness is kindness, and we should teach that across the board. I don't think we should have certain delineations of that. It should be calm. Here. And second, AEP exams. My son just graduated, my other son just graduated from high school, and he was in AP in honors. And he had lots of issues, a lot of grades issues and something like that. He's a very, very smart boy. Long story short, he said all the other kids in the class had the same issue. So, and speaking to other of his friends now, and I was holding him to a higher level going, you just need to work harder, you just need to work harder, you're staying at the class, you're staying for the hours, and he was. But everybody else is also not doing very well. So that seems to be an issue. You have a core group of kids who are very intelligent, who have obviously good work ethic to get to a certain place. Why are they struggling? Isn't that something we should look into? Are you aware of this issue? And is there anything being done about it? Because I don't think that's very fair about the kids, especially when you have a C average in a class for honors or AP. School rankings. We moved here about four years ago, maybe longer, because of school rankings. I don't care which ranking you want to use, pick one so we can use it to base our conversation off of. So right now, we are ranked 43rd in NISH. So whatever you want to go off of. Plus, where I was ahead of us at 36. We are failing at that level. I don't like where the AP and honors was going. So I moved here specifically for that. People move out very quickly thereafter because of the taxes and the cost of living here. So what you're doing now is that you're going to have people who don't remain in the town, but then also move out very quickly, and our taxes are getting higher, and we don't have a community. We need a community, people to stay. And if you don't have school rankings, no one's going to want to come. And regarding James Dolan, we'll just say the president of the MTEA. It is a position that is an advocate for teachers. It is somebody who actually deals with the board in a dealings basis. I am hoping to see if we can get a vote, to see if we can get that they have the same amount of time that we have when we come and speak. Otherwise, I feel like we're using this as a platform, and there's no separation of church and state.
Any more public comments?
Hi, Ms. Mark Etterer. So I wanted to talk about, I see some of the last meeting, we were talking about book banning. Mayor talked about book banning. I think that's people charging terms of what's really not going on. What I'd like to see is alternative books, some things that are not against some of our religious beliefs. So keep whatever book you have. I had my child, I asked the teacher, what books are being read to the child ahead of time? You've actually had this, this gets approved, right? There's lesson plans that are getting approved. She told me that she could not do that. I don't understand how that's possible, since you know what book you're going to read to the child. Asking for what books so I can speak to my child about the book? Would be appropriate. When I went and I was told that here's what's on the curriculum list, okay, cool. And when I looked at the curriculum list, I'll buy every book, I don't care. However, at the bottom, it's a caveat, these are the types of books. So even if I bought every single book, the books being read to the child might not even be there. So how do I know what's actually being read to the child? And if there's something that really is offensive, that I feel is offensive, let's look at some other literature that I think is, for what I feel is appropriate for some of us that say, hey, this goes contrary to our religious beliefs. So that kills that book banning market that's being portrayed here. Let's have another book, let's have an alternative. Let's, our child, you know, our children read something else, pick a classic. They were good enough three years ago, why not now? Okay? And just to hop on the school ranking? Listen, it's been beat to death, but at the same time, you can't keep going down in these rankings. So no matter which ranking you want to pick, like she said, pick one, I don't care, but it's going down. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want a second, what the gentleman here just came and said. In the name of diversity and inclusion, I think it would make sense to allow some choices for parents and for students, where some of the books that are being proposed or even imposed on them may have some ideas, ideologies that go against their beliefs, against their values. So if we're truly doing diversity and inclusion, we should allow inclusion for everybody and everybody's beliefs so that they can have choice. Obviously, we're not talking about banning books, but allowing choice does not mean banning books. And I think if we're truly going to do inclusion and diversity, let's do true inclusion and diversity. The second point that I wanted to make is just a question. I recently was made aware of a, and maybe I should have gone earlier, but in March, there was a policy update to the transgender policy. I just wanted to understand how the, what the decisions, what the updates that were made and how the decisions to make these updates were made. Was the community made aware and were the parents made aware? Thank you.
Chris, anyone?
Okay, just a few things. One, I was very impressed with the candidates or the new vice principals. It sounded like they'll be a great addition to the township, and I'm glad that our township currently still has such a great reputation that we can get such great people to come here and work with the students. Secondly, I'm very glad to hear that we are concerned about security in the schools and are doing things to upgrade that. I think that's really an important message to give to the community. That's something that we really should be dealing with. Third, people are blowing up on Facebook about NISH, I think, is the rating that everybody said about today. So I did a little bit of research, not a lot, today, and it looks like one of the things they count is that they take surveys from people who are in the district. So I thought, well, I'll just go ahead and take a survey that they can count for Montgomery. So pretty easy to just go in there and rate the school, and they take it. I'm like, wow, that's good. Gave a very good rating, but you know, someone might go there and go, huh, maybe I'll put a bad rating up. I don't know how they take those, but they do count that they take information from people who go through surveys within the school district and use it in the ratings. So take that for what it's worth. Finally, replacing books is replacing books. I have submitted questions, I think April 29th is when I sent you an email, requesting exactly what you meant by replacing books, giving you an opportunity to clarify it. I think that we're not fools. Replacing books, take this book out that I don't like, it's negative, replace it with this book, is a form of book banning. If we want to have more diversity, great, bring more books in. But don't get rid of the ones that you disagree with because that's indoctrinate people to your point of view. If you limit what they can read, and you're saying, hmm, my point of view is right, I don't agree with that, I'm going to only let you read these books. Bring more in, bring a lot more in, that's great. But don't replace the ones you don't like, the ones that you do like. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Robb, and I'm a current junior, sorry, senior now. At Montgomery High School. So I wanted to speak to the board tonight to emphasize the importance of looking beyond data and numbers when we look at education, and while still keeping them as a forefront and a point of view for perspective that leads us to like know the educational growth of our students and where they're at. But I think it's important to know that the value of education that we provide to our students should transcend data. Students are more than numbers. We are more than test scores, and we are more than a list of assignments or courses that we complete. So looking at the data and looking at the numbers and looking at only a view of that perspective cannot accurately provide the environment of education and how effective education actually is. So I think, thank you to the board for continuing to promote wholehearted education that provides a full perspective, and I urge you to look at us holistically as students and our performance, but also to look at schools and our education through a big picture view. On the topic of book banning, or whatever other members of the community would like to refer to it as, I think it's important to note that the inclusion of exclusive ideology negates the true nature of an inclusive environment. negates the true nature of an inclusive environment itself. If we are including ideology or including educational, you know, whatever ideology you're excited is probably a better word for it, that excludes other people or other groups or other ideas or other patterns of thought, it is undermining the true value and the true nature of an inclusive environment that we so value for our children and that we want to instill in our children so that when we go out in the world and we meet people who come from different backgrounds or different levels of education or socioeconomic status, we approach that with a mindset of understanding and not fear. So. Can you hear me on the phone?
Yep.
I was hoping the issue of book banning would be addressed and cleared up by now by the board. Asking for books with positive messages is not calling for book bannings. And I'll try again to put this in simple terms. Every time a new book comes into the curriculum, one will go by the wayside. With bringing on the fifty-seven bus and tomboy banning the books that they replaced, where'd they go? Somebody didn't like them? So, once and for all, we can drop the book banning rhetoric for what it is, a non-issue brought about by people seeking to make something out of nothing. The board notes this. But since the board has not addressed this matter and cleared it up for the public as I have requested, I have two more questions. What books were banned when fifty-seven bus and the tomboy became required reading? They replaced other books off this book. And may I please get a list of the books that were banned or replaced in the last three years? I think that the people here are concerned about book banning, would want that list. I would appreciate a response tonight or in writing after the next meeting, after this meeting. And if there will be no response, I would appreciate knowing that now. And I have my questions for you.
Can I make a comment? This is my first time coming speaking. First of all, I would like to thank all board members for their dedication, time and effort they spend for our kids. I thought it's not an easy job. I just have one concern. When we moved to Montgomery fifty years back, the school district was around like top five. And that was one of the main reasons for us to move here, for a good quality education. But now it has dropped to number forty-three, which is a significant drop. I just wanted to ask if the board has an action plan to get around that.
Thank you. Any other new business, public comments?
Good evening, my name is Rich Specht. So, as was mentioned earlier, the board held a retreat and I want to congratulate and thank you for taking that, having that extra meeting. You've put in a lot of time, whether it's committee meetings or attending here or just preparing for board meetings. Adding another meeting to the schedule is not, especially an all-day meeting, is certainly something to be appreciated. I kind of look at those retreats as professional development. We talk about professional development for teachers. The retreat is a professional development for the board. And so, I think that was very useful. There were three topics that I thought were important. The discussion about governance and about building relationships, and that was alluded to earlier by Mrs. Dalling, I thought was positive. I was excited to hear about the launching of a strategic planning initiative. I think, you know, obviously COVID threw kind of a monkey wrench into some of those types of long-term plans that were going on, but now is a great time to start that back up and I'm excited to see that process roll out. The third thing was I appreciated the discussion about communication. And one of the things in particular that I thought was interesting was, I think it was, Gwen had said that it was inform, not just to inform, but also to involve and invest. Sometimes we talk about communication being an outward-facing thing, that we want to provide information. And while that's true, it's also important to have, just like public comment tonight, it's important to be able to get information coming in and to invest with the community to address some of the issues that are being concerned or to provide information. Sometimes that's it. There may be misunderstandings about what's going on. And so, having that communication out, but also listening, I think is important. And I noticed tonight that you're hiring a communications specialist, which I think is exciting to drive that initiative. Finally, I want to disagree with the prior speaker about Mr. Dolan's attendance here. I think that the Teachers Association is something that's a very important of our district. And I think it's important for him to provide status. For example, this evening, he talked about the district's plans for student achievement and some of the projects that are ongoing with that to address some of the things that were talked about tonight. And so, I think it's important, I don't think we want to have an adversarial relationship with our Teachers Association. I think having a collaborative one with, which includes him speaking, I think is very valuable. Thank you.
I'll be brief, I know it's late, I'm just speaking as a mom of four. We actually, oh, I'm sorry, Michelle Dall, Alex Gilman, New Jersey.
And the board member disclaimer, make that statement.
I am, yes, I am representing myself as a parent, as a Montgomery parent and resident of four wonderful children who are in eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grades. We actually had our children in independent schools. And one of the main reasons that we moved to Montgomery was for Mr. Corey Delgado. And so, I just wanted to recognize him because we've had such wonderful opportunities to note our amazing faculty and staff that are retiring. And while thankfully, he's not leaving our district, I think that he really merits our celebration of him. He's an extraordinary educator who cares about students and cares about our children. So, he's a big, big reason why we're at Montgomery and I've seen him live that each and every day. It's also a reason that I wanted to become part of the board because in my thirty years in education, I want to do everything and anything that I can to support our faculty. I very strongly believe that no school is strong unless it's got strong faculty. And so, we have to be able to do everything that we can to support our faculty and staff. So, know that that is what I'm doing as a member of the board and I know that my colleagues are with me. So, thank you very much. And yay, Corey Delgado!
Hi, Barbara Preston, Rocky Hill, I'm a member of the school district. I'm also a reporter for the Montgomery News, so I have to say that. I just had to speak because we just completed at the Montgomery News, an extensive study of state rankings and test scores by the Department of Education. And I hear over and over again of parents saying that Montgomery has slipped in the rankings. They moved here because Montgomery was ranked very high and now it has slipped in the rankings. It's true, Montgomery has slipped in the rankings. However, you need to look at why this is the case. There's an article in the July issue on this very nature. All regular public schools are slipping in the rankings. And I think it's very important that you take a look at the reason why. Selective magnet schools, and this is, these are schools that you have to test to get into. They are exam schools, they're public schools. However, they take the cream of the crop out of the school district and they put them into a magnet school. All top twelve schools are selective magnet schools, every single one of them. And most of the top fifty are now public magnet schools. Very, very clear that that's what's happening. Now, would Montgomery want a magnet school? I think that you lose a lot by talking, everybody wants diversity. I think that Montgomery seems to have a wonderful diversity, not just of religion, not just of color of skin, but of different abilities. People who are very, very bright can get perfect scores on the SAT. And they're just as valuable, it seems to me, to the district as somebody who is not as bright and different ways of learning, et cetera. Doesn't mean that they're not as smart, really. I hear a lot of people saying that Hillsborough is now over Montgomery, that they now rank higher. If you take a really close look at the test, all students have to take this, New Jersey's, thank you, New Jersey Student Learning Assessment. Montgomery ranks higher than Princeton, higher than Hillsborough, higher than Hopewell, higher than South Brunswick, way higher than the state average, way higher in math and language arts. And we rank really high, ninety-three point two percent at sending our graduates to college. And that's one of the highest in the state for a regular public school. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I spoke a D four, but I've come to a few good meetings. I'm starting to see the kind of aggression towards what's happening in our school system. I have worked with Petty for, I'm a school teacher at the Petty School, private high school. And all I can say is, I really like the fact that we've had so much support from the parents and trust. And I don't hear that from these parents of these students. You have to trust the teachers are trying to do what they can do best. And it gives a teacher a sense of like, not only an empowerment, but also a sense of identity with the students that they can, not only do they trust you, they trust them to do the best for them. And I believe that happened in Montgomery Township. I had one of my students go to Petty, I mean, one of my children go to Petty. And I had another one that was able to get in Petty. And again, selective school, all handpicked kids, so easy to teach, okay? In so many ways. And I also did substitute teaching in Hillsborough, the school district. I saw a whole different thing happen there, okay? And I didn't know everyone worked in this public school system after working at Petty because I had freedom there as a teacher. I was an art teacher, yeah, we had a lot more freedom, okay? And I can't tell you how wonderful it is to be a teacher when you feel that the support of the parents is there, okay? And I think you should support what they're doing here because I have listened to what they're trying to do with inclusion and diversity. And I'm a hundred percent with them. And I think you should be too, because it's amazing what they're doing.
Ready to address the board?
So, God bless. Thank you for what you're doing. And all I can say is, my kids have got a great education here. And I actually had one that wanted to be here instead of going to Petty. And it was a full-blown scholarship to go to Petty, okay? They can offer here things that they did not offer at Petty. And Petty is very expensive, private high school. And the same, you know, yes, thank you, okay? And I support the teachers here and I support what's happening here. My husband volunteers, I call it volunteering, when he helps with substitute teaching at the schools. And I hear what's going on in these schools and these teachers are great. You have an amazing curriculum here. And I'd say one hundred percent, yes, go for it, thank you.
Good evening, how are you? This is my first time as well. I've been here many times in the attendance, but my first time. This is about the transgender policy which got updated in March this year. And one of the sections of this policy talks about the use of facilities such as restrooms, locker rooms, and changing facilities. I have a daughter and I have a concern that this can be misused. I would like to know how this decision was made and was there any consideration around the concerns that I raised? Thank you.
The other group is the public comments. See and hear you now. That will conclude our new business of the Board of Education Public Comments. Superintendent Madote, would you please respond to any questions that you're able to answer? I know there are a few. Michelle, do you want to address the policy? We can change, we can change now.
So, just as the chair for the transgender, it is a policy that has to do with the use of facilities. And that policy was not changed. I'm not sure what your question was, sir, but the policy was not changed. It was reviewed by the committee. And we really wordsmithed it in terms of really going through the language. And although it's a policy for transgender students, it recognizes both transgender and non-transgender students. We also had principals at the meeting that talked about procedures that they have in place at each school if and when a child identifies as transgender, that there is a whole, you really have to go through a whole procedure. And transgender and non-transgender students are allowed to be given the opportunity to go to a single gender or a single bathroom if they choose to. But the policy was not changed. Not quite sure what you're referring to in terms of changing the policy.
On the website, it says updated March twenty-twenty-three.
It does say that, but it was not changed. Okay. I don't know why it says updated.
Because it was reviewed.
Because it was reviewed. Okay. So, did we change that? That is misleading. Do we, that is misleading. Do we always say updated even if it's not changed or typically we don't review or government changing? Gary's office does that, I can check tomorrow. Maybe we can just change the language to say updated, not changed or?
Should we say reviewed?
Just say we're going to do it March twenty-twenty-three. We can insert that language. Thank you.
So, may I just add a few words just for clarity? So, there is a concern that came from the community. And as part of the policy committee, we opened up the policy just to read through it and understand the issues that parents have been sharing with us. And I think what Michelle referenced in regards to reaching out to the principals and getting assurance that it will be treated with specific requirements, that there will be no abuse that takes place of kids that don't perhaps want to use it to their advantage, right? Because I think you mentioned the word safety. So, the principals assured us that that would be a major code of conduct violation for the students. And if any students would be, any student would be caught, you know, not following proper policy, that would be an issue. And also, we did have a debate because the Strauss estimate that we use right now from a legal perspective, they treat this policy as a mandate. The New Jersey State says it's a guideline. So, that's part of the reason why we opened up for discussion back in Uh, so that's part of the reason why we opened up, uh, for discussion back in March to have a conversation, you know, how do we reflect this policy mandate versus guideline? Which is where we reached an agreement with the principals that there will be very strict code of conduct violations if anyone abuses, um, this particular policy. So I hope that helps.
So we will look into why I said that it was edited in March, but there was no substantial changes, maybe some grammar changes that you mentioned.
And Superintendent LaForte or Board Member Downing, I'm not sure. It was my understanding and interpretation that it is a mandate, a policy.
My understanding from Strauss estimate is that it isn't a mandate.
That it isn't. So can we follow up on that?
We identify it as a mandate, yes.
However, when, uh, the attorney was here, when the attorney was here, Mary and I did have a conversation with Stephen. And that was part of the reason why we opened up the policy. Because it was, he specifically stated that it was not a mandate, that it was actually a guideline. It was just, uh, referred to by the company that utilizes that.
Thank you. We'll have to turn again. So let's follow up on that.
We'll follow up.
So that we're accurate and appropriate in how we identify and characterize those policies. So thank you.
That's important.
Thank you for your questions. Superintendent LaForte, please continue. So thank you to the parents who shared, um, their personal stories. And I'm sorry to hear that your children had any negative situations at school. And I will follow up with the principals and have them look more into the HIV trainings for the students and abilities. There was a question about the AP exams. The AP is, um, guided by College Board, the curriculum and everything. So, students, we don't have much flexibility with implementing the AP curriculum. The question about the 43rd and NIEH, um, I know another public member said, so 50% of half of the information that they derive is surveys. So if somebody asks, how can we get the scores up? Please get out there and be positive in the surveys. Because that's half of some of the scores. I did a little, um, research myself. So, Bridgewater, Raritan School District rated higher than us. They have 62% proficiency in reading. We have 71%. They have 38% proficiency in math. We have 59%. Hillsborough has 66% in reading. We have 71. They have 42 in math. We have 59. Bridgewater has a 13 to 1 teacher to student, uh, student to teacher ratio. Hillsborough has 16 to 1. We have 17 to 1, which is inaccurate. Our, right on the state website, it says ours 12 to 1. So that is misinformation that NIEH has that impacted that score. It also says that 30% of our teachers are in the first or second year. That impacts us negatively. Other districts are 7 and 11%. We also have a cost of living of a C+. The other districts have A- s and Bs. So all of those things, meaning it just is more expensive to live in Montgomery, counts against us. Uh, student absenteeism, which we talked about with the state data. I need the parents to make sure your children come to school. They cannot miss school. Um, they have to be here. Anything over 10 days a year is counted against the school district in their scores. We also talked about the different programs and services and testing assessment that we put into place to track our students aligned with the state testing to improve our test scores.
So there's that, that was a couple of people mentioned that.
Well, Mary, is looking, can I have a very quick moment? Um, I think a community member asked about, um, an email that went out. Can you just maybe clarify protocol? If community members do email the board, as individual board members, right? We cannot, or we're not really responsible, or we're not encouraged to write back directly to a community member. So it goes to the board, um, email. But for example, I myself will not email a parent back. That's not an appropriate way to respond, correct?
Well, it's typically a chief brother by the boy, secretary of school business administrator, and/or superintendent.
Exactly, okay. Just so thank you for clarifying that. Because I know what community members expecting this.
And I do know that at our retreat last Tuesday, um, those board members that were present, um, we had a list of agreements. And one of them, um, which I'm looking forward to is discussing that communication platform and clearly outlining what that looks like for us.
And there was questions handed to me regarding, uh, books that were replaced. Um, I'll have to give that to the English supervisor of the high school. School's out for the summer. They can work some days in the summer. So I don't know when that answer will get back to you, but we will get that to you. Thank you, Superintendent LaForte, Board Member Downing.
Yeah, I guess, uh, books that have been replaced is one thing that's brought up in the planning was another, um, but options for other books. And I, I think sometimes I've heard that, uh, the classes offer, say, three books and there's not a lot of selection. Is there a possibility of encouraging those teachers to add more books to the book list so that the parents and the children have more, more choice? That's something to think about.
Well, as part of standards, they have to meet a specific criteria. They have to discuss certain social, um, events that go on in, in life. Um, discuss different topics, different genders, different sexuality, different religions. So in order to do that, that's, that's how those books come. So I'm not, that's again, another, maybe something we defer to ACI for further discussion?
Mm-hmm. Next year.
May I just make a suggestion? Um, our policy 2510 talks about adoption of educational material. And one of the items here lists that the list of all approved textbooks shall be maintained and revised annually by the superintendent and made available for use of the professional staff and for information of members of the board and the public. When is the timeframe, Mary, for us to really go through the books and make sure that those books are available to the community? Because I think we have a lot of folks coming up asking for what books are being utilized in the classroom. I think this would actually address a lot of it if we could make that more of a public, uh, place where they can easily access those.
All the books used in the curriculum are in Rubicon Atlas that parents have access to for their children.
And I know the Board of Education will be facilitating, um, a town hall during the month of July, the date to be determined, but with noticeable, um, announcements so that our parents expressly and other community members, um, can make, um, plans to be present because through the support of the superintendent, um, and her team members here in the district, we are going to conduct a town hall specifically around the textbook issue availability and for, um, and access by the public and a step-by-step guide, um, of how parents may access that information using that resource. So be on the lookout for that, please.
Yeah, and just to follow up to that, because it does specifically say that we as board members are to see the list of approved textbook. Are we expected to go into the tool ourselves and?
No, no, I leave the board back in January.
Yes, okay, so that is.
That list is posted on schoolboard.net.
That's the list.
That's the current list.
Okay, thank you.
You can access that on schoolboard.net. We'll have to turn again, just there.
Thank you.
May I comment to that since we are on this policy? Because it may actually be very helpful to hear the, the warning on the policy to add clarification to some misunderstandings that we are hearing. So for policy 2510, all textbooks and reference materials should be periodically evaluated through their continuing usefulness and relevance and shall be replaced or updated with additions as often as necessary to meet the needs of the pupils and the curriculum. In addition, a list of all approved books shall be maintained and revised annually by the superintendent and made available to, for the use of the professional staff and for the information of the members of the board and the public. Policy 2230 states curriculum guides shall be prepared for each subject course or unit to be taught at the Montgomery Township Schools. These guides shall be developed in consultation with teaching staff under the direction and superintendent, uh, under the direction of the superintendent and shall be adopted annually by the Board of Education. The teacher will use the guides as the core of each course being taught. It shall be the responsibility of the principal to ensure that the curriculum guides are being followed. So, we've heard from the parents that there are some books that are not on the list and the teachers are, um, having, I guess, a discretion of using books that have not been approved. So, um, my question is, can we have a discussion and maybe, um, a follow-up with the principals to ensure that the policy that we actually had in place is being followed? Because if we are the board that is supposed to evaluate and approve the books and that books, that list should be maintained properly, then there should be really no discretion for the teachers to bring new additional books and use in the classroom. And to this gentleman's point, if there is an asterisk in Rubicon that there may be other books, that kind of leaves the whole, I guess, um, well, not an opportunity, but there may be, uh, an option, you know, to, at books that are free, that are not evaluated. So then those policies are useless.
Well, I encourage that parent to meet with the school principal and go over their concerns. You know, we're very many levels up here in a public meeting without access to confirm and deny or say what's going on with that situation. Because I'm in Rubicon Atlas now and I'm in the first unit of one of the literature courses. And I have The Great Gatsby, Just Mercy, Man Said You Were the Universe. Like, everything is right there, very clear, public. I just want it as a public person.
I think that was about torture, okay? That the asterisk is on torture.
I think I asked maybe in our workshop, it's called full five. I remember in a folder, maybe Fiona did this presentation, I would allow that. There might be ties in the classroom where a teacher, we have to trust our teachers and they may assess their spirit and think that there is an extra resource or some sort of material that they might want to include in a lesson plan. But it's age-appropriate, something right, correct me if I'm wrong, that they need to speak with the, you know, often the consultant or team leaders get approval and it's, it's literature or resources that's age-appropriate. It's very, very similar. So I'm wondering if that's what you're thinking about, which I've held when it says, you know, there could be that change. Um, but again, it's not much of other books necessary, but additional resources and age-appropriate, they have to consult with, you know, additional teachers, correct? So it's not that teachers are going, well, we can just pull whatever from each one they want, you know? There's a very strict process.
Teachers have discretion in books that they read aloud to the students from their classroom library that are donated books that are age-appropriate.
Right.
Both, they would not be in Rubicon Atlas or approved by the board. Those are just supplemental materials.
So if this has more detail, will be addressed. And hopefully the director of curriculum and instruction for young boys and other supervisors and appropriate staffing will be able to answer those questions by the community and provide that level of detail that I think will eliminate some of the confusion and/or misunderstanding. Any other board members have any, um, additional comments about this?
I do.
Topic areas, thank you both.
I do. Um, so I think that, you know, if you've ever been inside an elementary classroom, the idea is that it's rich with lots of print and, um, that everything's labeled and that you have, you know, all of this opportunity for students to see lots of, of, um, you know, print and, and resources. Um, I think it would be, I can't even imagine, I really can't. And I did do, um, a little bit of time in first grade and a lot of time in fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth grade. I can't imagine having to catalog an entire classroom library and put it out there as a list of, of, uh, potential things that a student would, would, would be read to. I also think that, you know, we've been asked as, as board members, um, a number of times to come and do guest readings. I don't think that those books are listed in the curriculum either. Um, and was there a formal lesson? I mean, there was a, a read aloud and a discussion and, and that happens so frequently, especially in K through two. I mean, it, it, it is almost just part of, just the tenor of the school day that there's all of these read alouds happening. Um, I just, I guess, I'm, I don't know where the line goes between, um, the educator as the professional, um, and the, the board and the parents and the community as almost, um, uh, this like, you know, oppressive force of, no, no, before you, before you read anything, make sure that everybody is, is on board, that it's okay to be read. Uh, it, it just feels really, really, um, combative to me right now. And I'm not, I, I, it just doesn't sit right with why I'm here and why I think that our teachers should be given a little bit of autonomy. And we have a curriculum, but then there shouldn't be professional judgment that we allow them to display. That's just my opinion. And maybe it does.
And I would like to know exactly where the asterisk is, because I just went through a whole, the whole first grade unit and there's no asterisks. There's definitely books in every single unit. Hang on, monkey, owls, sharks, super storms, grow happy. Every single unit has three to five books in it.
We apologize. Our new business to the board public comment has ended. And we have a procedural format, which we facilitate of Board of Education meetings. You know, but we thank you for your presence, your participation and your input. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Spina, um, for that. And I know you're also speaking on, from the perspective of being a classroom teacher. And I do know that it's highly touted and actually, um, a best work practice here in Montgomery Township. Not only, um, do we have a, um, a responsibility, um, to respect teaching, you know, um, as a profession and, um, trusting, you know, their judgment, you know, even when supplemental resources are identified. It, even those supplemental resources are vetted through conversations, um, with the school leaders, um, with our district level supervisors and directors. If any parent, you know, is questioning any piece of literature, um, that is present, you know, in a classroom, you know? My children have attended every single school in this district as colleagues, as many of you. Um, I, the classrooms, it's an open space for visit. Teachers make themselves accessible, um, to answer questions. Principals do as well. So, there is an open space concept, um, and these individuals are accessible to you if you have questions. And actually, those persons at the schools are the best people to communicate with when you have questions about the curriculum. Because as a Board of Education, you know, it is our responsibility to participate in these committee meetings. You know, we ask our questions there and we vote to approve or not to approve. But it is not our charge, um, to get into nitty-gritty and decide, you know, which books are taught in the classrooms. So I think sometimes there's some confusion on the delineation of whose responsibility it is. And it rests with the professionals who are charged with identifying, um, and facilitating, um, these materials and the lessons in the classroom. You know, but we really appreciate, um, this really important topic area being brought to the attention because the superintendent is a non-voting board member and she can absolutely follow up, um, with her team members to ensure that there is accessibility, um, for these materials that you are requesting. So now we're at our action agenda, which is our next to last item on, for this evening. So I move, um, that we approve the action agenda items. I believe it's 1.1, uh, to 4.3.
Sir?
Sir.
Sir.
One second, sir. I'm going to commence with the roll call rules.
Mr. Carlson?
I know 1.1C underscore 249154, should I talk more slowly here?
Please.
1.1C underscore 249154 underscore UMS underscore, I'm going to be shorter, 05242023? It was item 7 that we cut off earlier? No, everything else, yes.
Item number 7, no, everything else, yes. Gotcha.
Ms. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Stielek?
Yes.
Ms. Danko-Herman?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Spina?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Ms. Woodlock, adjourned.
Yes.
Dr. Spence-Walls?
Yes.
Motion heard.
Thank you, everyone. We have reached the conclusion of our Tuesday, June 27, 2023 Open Public Board Meeting. Again, we really value and appreciate all of your attendance and your participation and your diligence with calling up and asking questions. Thank you so much. And I will echo the sentiment expressed by Second VP Todd earlier in the agenda. Thank you so much, Mr. Gary Hoffman, a business, a school business administrator, expert, very highly respected throughout the state of New Jersey. So thank you for your temporary service, and we will miss you immensely, and don't be a stranger.
Yes, thank you, Gary.
Thank you. And should there be no objections? I move that we adjourn this open public meeting.
So moved.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
I need to hear these ayes.